Seven o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. Just for the benefit of the audience, we have Irv Stadley joining us by Skype from down in the Roseburg area. He's working down there, so say hi, Irv.
Hi, Irv.
He's waving. So if he pipes in, you'll know what that's about. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second?
Owen?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Student reps, Elijah and Courtney, you're up.
Hi, I'm Courtney and I have the club's report. So ASB led by Johnny Faro is working to play in the Mr. SHS pageant, which is a fundraiser for Metal Clues International. The pageant will take place on April 16th and the show will be a great entertainment for a great cause with Cole Chandler, Trevor Cote, Wyatt Crofts, Dustin Meyer, Wyatt Fruoff, Hannah Rosenberry, Robbie La Park, and Matthew Peters competing for the glorious win. The speech and debate team led by Katie Cantrowitz recently competed at the Oregon City High School Invitational. Both Rachel Stadley and Melie Hazel finalized in humorous interpretation. The whole team is now looking forward to state and national qualifiers. The theater run by Doug Osterhout just completed the showings of their wonderful production, Alice in Wonderland. The show is a hit and the theater is now looking forward to their spring one-act shows. The National Honor Society run by Chrissy Arnall recently helped with the Eugene Field Reading under the SARS program. They helped with setup, cleanup, and story reading, making it a wonderful night for the children involved. The Red Cross Club led by Kirsten Barnes helped with the Salem's 97305 Home Fire Safety Campaign on February 28th. With 32 student volunteers working with other members of the community, the teams installed 124 fire alarms and helped to create 76 home fire evacuation plans. The club is now working on planning the Red Cross Blood Drive held at the school on April 2nd. And that's all I have for clubs.
All right, now I'm Elijah Nielsen. Now it's time for your sports. Girls' basketball. The Lady Foxes completed the regular season as co-champions. They will have a home playoff game on Saturday. Le Parsons was the named MVP, Maggie Roth was second team, and Burke McCarty, Hannah Munson, and Casey McLaughlin were all honorable mentions. Well, they had the game already. I think this was sent to me before that, but they ended up winning that game, so. Boys' basketball. The varsity boys' basketball team heads into the playoffs as a number-fourth-ranked team in 5A. They clinched a league title with three games to spare, finishing with a 13-1 record in the league. Their current record for the season is 18-4. Sam Roth was named Player of the Year in the league, while Danny Larenoff was chosen for all-league second team. Cole Chandler and Julian Downey also received votes as honorable mention additions. Due to their number-one finish in league, the team was granted a first-round bye and will play a home game on March 6th, which we won, and the winner gaining a spot in the state tournament at Gil Coliseum in Corvallis. The JV team coached by Brent Saturn achieved a perfect 14-0 record in league and finished 19-3 overall. The three boys' teams finished league with a combined 39-3 record. Swimming. Girls, fourth at district meet, and boys, fifth. Had 25 kids swim on Saturday of district 10 finalists, more than usual. Highest finish was Adrian Kraus, fourth 100 backstroke. Our three foreign exchange students had a wonderful experience. Wrestling. Great season. Silverton was represented well with a handful of wrestlers at state. Very proud of our boys. And then spring sports started on the 2nd, and it's going really strong. So I hope to see all of our sporting events coming up.
Very good. Any questions for these guys?
Nope.
We should throw in there for the benefit of the public and people watching on TV, the boys play in state tournament tomorrow, Tuesday at 3:15, and the girls play Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Both in Corvallis.
Oh yeah, gonna be exciting.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Oh yeah.
Good deal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open our first audience with visitors. Would anyone like to address the board tonight? No one? Okay, Gene?
Okay.
As always, we'll keep it to four to five minutes.
Thank you, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My concerns lie in we're moving forward with a project with a so-called $2.5 million budget. I see that the schedule provided for working with DOWA works out something to just prior to June. But in the meantime, we're spending again more tens of thousands of dollars, and at the same time, we're considering moving into buildings that have the same seismic problems that Eugene Field School has. We're not taking into account, even in DOW's report of 2012, they said, and I don't agree with their number, but they said 27.5 million to fix the Slater Campus. That's the whole thing. So if you prorate that out, well, we're talking about 15 million or so, or 10 million, or whatever it is, to upgrade the east side and the west side of the facility. Those facilities showed fatigue and failure during the fault of 1993. So we're not paying attention to that. I have numbers from architect and engineering from Salem that would say the whole thing maybe could cost 10 million for remediation and upgrades, seismic. Even then, the east and west side would be costing 4 million. But we're also saying we're bringing in modules. There's stuff on your list talking about improvements with the city. We don't know what that is or why it should be happening. I think it's all related to the change of occupancy, so-called, that occurred. The architect that came and looked out of Oregon City, who went and looked at the facility with Bill Peace, the engineer from Salem, said that that was unnecessary. We still have a building that's e-occupancy, and we're going down a path that we don't know why we're doing it. He said that this could be changed in my discussion with him, but we're moving ahead with something anyway to extend an improvement potentially through the property there at Slater Street. So there's just so many concerns about what's going on. In the last couple of weeks, I've gone personally up to Mark Twain School to look at, to see if my mental opinion of what I recall was the same. If you look at the east wing, even the west wing, the same problems with it, but you go down and look at it, the entire east side of the building is all glass. There's absolutely no sheer walls whatsoever. If you look at the structure, you can look in the windows and you can see a beam that's supporting the clear story up above. The clear story is not in line with the sheer wall that's going north and south. We have a building there that can easily fall over much quickly than Eugene Field School, yet we're moving little kids into it. I don't understand how we can be doing this without some pause and say, "Let's have a good chat on this," but that's what you're doing. You're hiring people that are gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars, and where are we gonna go with it? The excuse is all based on that, "Well, we've got a mandate from the voters. They voted 57.5 percent no." That doesn't mean that they agree with me or if I agree with them, but they're basically saying, "No, don't get out of Eugene Field School. No, don't tear down Slater. No, don't spend any money, or no, we need to find a better solution." But we could have a bond, you've already had presentation to you, that we could have a bond and take care of, that we could have a bond and take care of the rural people as well, maybe $3 million included in a $10 million package, and perhaps do an absolutely new school on Westfield for potentially 15 or 16 million, with 3 million or so going to the rural schools. You wouldn't even look at it. So I sure appreciate seeing some kind of pause from this group that says, "Let's take a look at this," and you're not doing it. We had a vote of four to three of the board members. I think that's too close to call and continue down this path. People are saying, "How can four people on the board spend this money that we said don't spend?" So there's my fast speech.
Okay. Any questions for Gene? Okay, thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we've been spending the last two and a half years looking at all these options, so that's my opinion. Anyone else want to address the board tonight? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Revisions to policies. This is the second reading on all these. We'll just go through them one by one. If anybody has anything, speak up. JF/JFA, student rights and responsibilities. JG, student discipline. JHCD, non-prescription medication. And JHCD-A, prescription medication. Again, second reading on all of them. Okay, nothing. We have one policy, IIBGA, Electronic Communication System. It was in our packet. First reading. Any comments or questions on this one?
I guess I have a question. I don't have any problem with what's in the policy, however, I didn't have time to go back and look at other policies. There's been a lot of issues recently out in the news, and actually it's affected me personally as well with personal information being taken. Do we have policies on how to handle personal information, and if not, should that be incorporated in here?
Are you referring to personal information related to employees or students or both? Okay. You have, and I can't cite them right now, Wally, I'd have to take a look.
Sure.
You have electronic policy specific to students and staff, and I'm just thinking about the policy specific to students refers to some specific legislation around protection of information specific to children's SIPA, I believe it's Children's Internet Protection Act, and some other references in there, Wally. So...
What about our employees?
Our what?
What about our employees guarding social security numbers and birth dates and those type of things?
You have already a policy that's not specific to electronic communication, but is specific to release of information about employees that restricts us from sharing things like social security numbers with anyone without employee consent.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I didn't have time to go down and look, but I was concerned.
Sure. I can do any additional research that you'd like.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Anything else on this first reading of this policy? Okay. Our third discussion item. We have a budget committee meeting date scheduled for April 16th. That is the same evening as Mr. SHS. And Mr. SHS is a major fundraiser that the high school puts on. It's a really fantastic event. So Andy and I talked about this, and we wanted to run it by everybody, changing our, the budget committee meeting maybe one week later to the 23rd. How do people feel about that?
Never worked.
I think it's okay.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
Fine with everybody? Okay, let's do that, Andy.
Okay.
Any other items for discussion tonight? Okay, administrator and staff reports. When you're ready, Andy.
Okay. I have three topics to share with you this evening. First of all, and on the back table is a template that's being used by the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators in conjunction with quite a few other organizations that you see on the bottom of the sheet, and it's specific to this school district though, but it's important that I share this information with you related to three funding levels for K-12 education in the state of Oregon that are currently being considered by the legislature. And you spent, we spent a little time during your work session to discuss those three levels and the potential implications in this school district and even statewide to a certain degree. So I bring this information to you today because it shares some specific, or at least more clarity around the potential impact on this district. And so rather than reading all of it, because you can certainly read it yourselves, is the $7.235 billion, which is the co-chair's proposed budget, while it is a larger figure than we had in the last biennium, that number also reflects full implementation of, or excuse me, implementation of full-day kindergarten across the state of Oregon, which is around a $220 million price tag. And so the actual increase is minimal. In fact, you'll see that the actual amount of revenue received per student, and this is weighted student, so it goes through the funding formula, is estimated to be actually $97 less per student for Silver Falls School District as compared to the previous biennium. And you'll see with a $7.5 billion K-12 budget estimate, that raises to about 130 in the positive, and at $7.875, at 380 in the positive. So I share this with you because there's been some discussion at the legislative level about the $7.235 having some traction, some real interest by the legislature. And this information spells out, in my mind, fairly clearly, as it does in many school districts across the state of Oregon, that if a funding level of $7.235 is approved by the legislature, it will result in some reductions in this school district. We estimate at this point for those to be at least $800,000 of reduction, but we won't know some of the details specific to that until, of course, we get into the budgeting process. But at that revenue level, Silver Falls School District will take a hit. So I'm sharing that information with you and with the public this evening to actually even contact their legislator, to feel very comfortable in sharing this information, to letting them know what the anticipated impact on this district will be at that funding level, and to strongly encourage our legislature to consider adequate funding for all schools in the state of Oregon. So I'll leave that there with you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. And can I address any questions now, or...
Any questions for Andy on this?
Do you have any insight of what caused them to firm up on that lower number so far, or are they... I guess it's a two-part question. You're getting a preliminary indication that it's a lower number. Does that generally carry through, or have we ever seen those change, the logging in, you know what I mean, and what caused them to firm up? Because at our last work session just a couple of weeks ago, things seemed to be up in the air.
Right.
And now we seem to be getting some indications of the number.
Yeah, and I'm certain I can't give the specific reason to that. What I can talk to you about, Tom, is trends or patterns of what we've seen in the past. And what I can tell you with confidence is that when the governor has proposed a budget in the past, that number has typically been higher than what approved by the legislature than what the governor has proposed. And the governor's proposal was around $6.975, actually, a billion dollars, and that included full-day kindergarten, so that was essentially a zero. Since we've had the changeover in governor, I think all bets are off about that right now with what the current governor wants to do. So most people and organizations are leaning on the $7.235 because that came directly from the co-chairs of the Education Committee. So with that said, I don't know about how the co-chair budget lands in comparison to what the final approved appropriation has been with legislative sessions in the past. Some of you may have a better understanding of that than I do, but I give you the second part of your question is why. I think, as you well know, as all of you well know, that the legislature is, it's a political body, and there's a lot of push-pull going on, and there are multiple needs out there. I did hear at a superintendent meeting the other day of some concerns, or it's not concerns, but requests, and I think these are valid, specifically to helping meet the needs of adults and children as we move into the future, especially related to mental health needs, poverty needs, needs related to hunger, needs related to health care. And all of those are, as you know, prominent, and so with that comes some very difficult decisions about where the money goes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Andy on the funding? Okay. I would encourage everybody to contact their legislatures and give them a kick in the butt. Andy, your next.
Each of you received a copy this evening of a sheet from our architect, Dawa IDI Group, titled Preliminary Schedule, Phase One Process. And it begins on March 13th and extends through late May. This information was recently generated by Dan Hess of Dawa after meeting with Joel Smallwood and me, and also having some preliminary meetings from his perspective anyway with the city. You'll see that there are some benchmarks along the way specific to planning efforts. And I think it's important to note that it's titled Phase One because there'll be a Phase Two after this is completed, because the Phase One intent is to really drill down into the specifics or better refine the figures within that $2.5 million price tag that we estimate the Slater Campus can be converted. And so the first task is to find out what some of those specific, or to be able to refine those figures with more specificity as compared to the estimates, which they currently are, to also work closely with the city to better define what the off-site improvements will be. We have the Westside Land Use Development Plan. We have estimates based upon what we've seen in the past and what we've done to this point. But of course, as with any project, the detail will be determined by the traffic impact analysis and the results of that, which has been requested from the city of Silverton, and our architect is working with the city and having that process as soon as possible. So once that information becomes clear, you'll see with those timelines as we move along that we'll have more specific information related to the definition of the scope as we move into the spring.
I have just one comment on that.
Sure.
Phase One, Phase Two has a lot of connotation towards the new high school when it was built. I'd really encourage Step One, Step Two, just because it really is, people reflect back on that.
Well taken.
Have we defined how long we want this, the lifespan of this project to be? Five years, 15, that type of thing? When we're done, the bills are paid, you know, how long are we... Yeah, when we're done, you know, are we gonna be looking at the end of this project? Are we expecting this last 15 years, five, 20? Do we have any indications of that, or what have we told Dawa so far?
Well, the, Dawa has been given direction to help generate a facility and produce a facility at the Slater Campus that will be adequate and compliant. And knowing that we have modulars that we're using for that construction, Tom, then I think the maximum, from my understanding, is 20 years out, expected lifespan for those things, realizing they last longer than that.
Yes.
And in this case, that's been, that's been the conversation to this point of it, again, not being a permanent solution to meet a 50, 70, or 80-year-old need of a school. It's just not possible and not reasonable. So they understand that, and again, the words adequate and compliant, I think, are a pretty common phrase in order to make it happen.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm trying to just differ, you know. Glad to hear that it's, you know, it's not supposed to, hopefully supposed to be something for two or three years, hopefully 15, 20, in that longer range.
Andy, when's the traffic impact study gonna be back? Can we have an idea on that?
The city is actually waiting for some additional information from Dawa. And if you'll note, Wally, the 3/13 and the 3/18 dates, that information will be used by the city and help to determine the detail they needed in order to do the traffic impact. We've submitted things like anticipated enrollment, grade levels, portions of the building which will be used, those pieces of information that a school district can provide. There are some architectural questions evidently that need to be addressed specifically or by specialists in order to begin that traffic impact analysis. I would estimate that it's going to be early March, or it's going to be early April before we see that traffic impact analysis started.
Thank you.
Anything else for Andy on the Slater Project? Okay, Andy, the procurement of ECS engineering.
We've done some, you had some information at your last work session about securing an engineer for the two projects, one in Creek and one at Scotts Mills School. And when we did some additional research specific to the scope of those projects and the estimated cost, we determined that the estimated cost for engineering services for those buildings will actually be higher than the threshold required for sole-source procurement. So sole sourcing is not an option for you to use for that purpose, so the finding of fact is not necessary, so we're putting this job out for bid. As long as, if we can, you can use your sole sourcing procurement policy for projects that are $250,000 or less specific to engineering services, and we expect that, estimate that this could go higher than that. And so if it can go higher, then I think the most appropriate thing to do that best meets the public interest is to put it out for bid.
Okay.
So Joel and I will be working on that in the near future.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Andy on any of this stuff? Okay, Linda, full-day kindergarten implementation.
So we are continuing with our planning phase towards moving for implementation of full-day kindergarten beginning in September of 2015. And we have started with some preliminary information out to the local community. We have posted things on the district Facebook page, on the district website. We've asked individual schools to post things on their websites. And we are in the process of preparing a paper brochure for kindergarten roundup to be handed out at all of those meetings. And we are also contacting, I'm in the process of contacting the local preschools so that they can get most accurate information out to their kids that are intending and prepared to enter full-day kindergarten. So when we come across the facilities portion of this conversation, we are able to manage full-day kindergarten in all of our buildings. We have plans set forth. The administrative team has worked with the kindergarten staff and myself, and we are ready to move forward in every building except for Eugene Field. So we have, I believe you received some information about two different conversations that are occurring right now, and I just wanna sort of fill in some of those gaps for you so that you know what is currently being considered. We're not looking for a decision tonight, but I think there are some pros and cons to both of these options, and so we'll need to discuss and you'll need to consider what the best final move is. So the first option is one that we presented early on in the process, which was to vacate two classrooms at Eugene Field by moving some district-level programs out to a rural school. And the benefits of that thought process and that move would be, we would be looking at one of the special ed, self-contained special education programs, and there's some merit to relocating that into a K-8 setting. Number one, it's less transition for children in that special ed setting, and so instead of having to move them and transition from Eugene Field to Robert Frost to Mark Twain to the high school, they would be able to maintain in one setting. There are some other benefits to offering students who have lifelong handicapping conditions and offering them opportunities to maintain their enrollment in a school where there will always be a playground open to them and where there may be larger green space, and some of the rural schools are just able to offer a different kind of setting across the K-8 spectrum that isn't necessarily present in each of those individual settings when you're encapsulated in either Eugene Field, Robert Frost, or Mark Twain. However, by vacating just two classrooms at Eugene Field and moving a district-level program, there obviously is impact at the building receiving that program, as well as it doesn't completely meet the need of space at Eugene Field, meaning that we would still have some specialists teaching on a cart. There would still be some pretty decent upheaval as far as how we would get those additional three sections of kindergarten by only moving two classrooms out. So a more recent idea that has come to the forefront is consideration of moving the current third graders at Eugene Field, I'm sorry, not the current third graders, the current second graders at Eugene Field, who will be the third graders next year, and moving the third-grade classes to Robert Frost beginning in this fall. So essentially what that does is that makes Robert Frost housing four grade levels, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, for one year. Some merit, some benefits to that sort of conversation include, that's the beginning of a transition we are going to be making anyways. So is there some merit in beginning the transition a year earlier and having one entire grade level, 25% of your Eugene Field population already moved to where they're going to be, potentially? Is there room at Robert Frost? Yes, there is room at Robert Frost, particularly for... Yes, there is room at Robert Frost, particularly for this one year. There is a large class of sixth graders that will be leaving. And the second graders that would be moving up as third graders is a smaller class. So, based upon the numbers and the way they work, we are guesstimating that the enrollment at Robert Frost would land somewhere about 465. The building can manage that many students. Again, that's a one-year agreement. And then the following year, so the fall of 2016, the sixth graders would move to Schleter Street with the seventh and eighth graders as part of the normal plan. This doesn't come without some disruption. There are some classrooms at Robert Frost that would be displaced. No one would be put on a cart, but there would be more use of the alcove space, which I'm not sure how familiar you are, but there's large, there's large space behind the classrooms that can be used for small group settings. So, Title I groups or small special education groups, small math groups, or the mezzanines are, of course, available as well. So, lots of conversation and transition plans would need to go into either of those options. And again, we're just in the discussion phase. But I, we did lay this as an option out in front of both the Eugene Field and the Robert Frost staff, basically preparing them for the fact that this would become public information when it was shared with you tonight. And we wanted them to hear it from us first. And just general consensus, we received positive feedback from both of those staffs. The Eugene Field staff understands the realistic nature of if the third graders are going to move anyways, does it make a difference if they move this year or next year? So, there was some positive feedback for that conversation. And on the Robert Frost end, a definite understanding, yes, this would impact us and things might be difficult, but it's for one year. And the potential that exists in transitioning the third graders up a year earlier may have some inherent benefits as well.
Would there be any, let's see, if you were to go with the first option, move some of the programs out to a rural school, would they then get moved back in a few years?
I, I believe that the decisions that we make now, we need to be making for the long term. So, I think that we need to be making decisions based upon what's in the best interest of the students and the programs.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Yes, so.
If we're going to move them back.
I do not believe that it would be the intent. If we believe that there's enough merit to moving the program to a K-8 setting and the benefits that that brings along with it, then we would leave them in a K-8 setting.
So, what's the difference with the third graders? I mean, would that, because that's not.
So, the, so the difference is if we move the third graders, that we vacate four full classrooms at Eugene Field, and that puts no one on a cart.
Understand, but you're saying it's only for one year. So, I guess I'm, what's the second year look like?
The third graders are going, in the second year, the third graders are going to be at Robert Frost.
Yes, but you're still, there's still the next group of kids coming in to Schleter Street or whatever. So, why would it now be a K through third grade there?
It wouldn't be, no, it'd be a K.
It'd always be a third. It'd always be a third grade.
It'll be a three, four, five. So, for one year, it would be a third through sixth grade building. And then for all years thereafter, it would be a third through fifth grade building because the sixth graders will have moved to Schleter at the same time that we vacate Eugene Field and the K through two move to Mark Twain. So, the final resting place for everyone is the same. It's simply a move one year earlier just for the third grade class, for our current second graders.
And then the information to the public, I encourage you to contact our town as well and do the insert part of it because that reaches the people that don't have people and kids in school.
When are you going to make, when do you need to make the decisions?
Yeah, this is a pretty significant decision. And it's one, while I think it has merit, it warrants enough conversation to feel comfortable with it, Tim. And so, I'm hopeful that tonight we can get some good input from the board, allow us to go back and do some additional investigation. There's some logistics about the building, I mean, everything from playgrounds to cafeteria, feeding kids, even student movement, beginning of days, end of days, et cetera, that, well, we believe we can sort out. We haven't investigated those enough sufficiently to know what those, exactly those are. So, I'm hopeful that you'll get some additional information from you tonight. And of course, it will generate some interest from the public, encourage them to contact us. So, mid-spring, April, possibly May at the latest, I think this decision would need to be made so we can do, get it taken care of over the summer.
It would be nice to have some information from the teachers and how they feel about the impact too, and how they can make it work and how it's, the difficulties of it not.
Especially with folks working in the spaces you referred to. Are any of these kids in these special programs that might be moved from town to out of town? Are they, is there health issues? They're to be removed, you know, we got the hospital.
Right.
Any, is that going to cause an impact?
Don't need to respond to that.
Within the functional skills classroom, we do have students that have health needs. We need to be very attentive to that. Out at Scottsmills School, for example, the squad already comes down from Woodburn, so really wouldn't be any closer if they're in town or if they're out at Scottsmills. If we sit the basic skills kids, less likely to have behavior, medical problems that you just never know who's going to show up.
Yeah.
Have there been any conversations with parents of the special ed kids who are now in town about going out to a rural school? How parents would feel about that?
We haven't had any of those conversations, yeah.
Okay.
We are collecting information based on their IEPs and from our specialists, what type of things we would need to have in order to make those programs very functional out there.
Do some of those kids come in from the rural areas anyway? Are they mostly in town?
We looked at our self-contained, about two-thirds of them are kind of in-town kids and most of them maybe outside the city center.
Okay.
A combination of both. If we did put the kids out at Scottsmills, our buses would be a little bit more efficient because they're already going out at Buchanan.
Oh, I see, okay.
I could see there could be some additional apprehension on parents' part by moving those kids out to Scottsmills and probably seem very positive moving the third grade, from a parent's point of view anyway, moving the third graders to Robert Frost.
When you look at Scottsmills School, it tends to be very highly sensitive or sensory type of school. It's loud, there's a lot of things going on, so a smaller setting would be a little bit calmer for the kids. So, there's some give and take that way too.
And if I may, Mr. Chert, we've mentioned Scottsmills. We actually looked at three rural sites. We considered Silvercrest and Scottsmills, especially since there is some room in those buildings. But we also considered Victor Point, but the enrollment at Victor Point just precludes us from being able to put a program there. But Scottsmills and Silvercrest were given additional consideration. And then Scottsmills really is the, is the better side of the two when it comes from an access standpoint, when it comes from a single-level standpoint, when it comes from, everything from wheelchair access to bus loading and unloading, there really is much more, much more opportunity to support students, I think, at Scottsmills School than there is at Silvercrest, just because of the layout of the school. So, that's, that's the, that's the consideration that we're leaning if we were to place a special needs program at one of the rural schools.
And I assume if third grade moves to Robert Frost, there would be split, split mezzanines instead of single-grade mezzanines, they would be split.
That decision hasn't been made, but it's my, I don't know what's on or off. Those kinds of things, you know, some of those real specific logistics haven't been decided, but that was one of the first sort of concepts that came up was, you know, would, would we, would this give us an opportunity to mix up some mezzanines and even do some cross-grade level buddy systems and, you know, having sixth-grade buddy or mentor third graders? And so, those conversations have naturally started just because the option has been laid on the table.
Okay. Any thoughts from anybody, any other thoughts? Andy, maybe we could make this a topic at our next work session? Well, we don't have a work session.
Yeah, next work session is in, is in April. You have a joint session this month.
Yeah, okay.
But we can, we can do the same conversation in this sitting again in April.
Yeah, everybody give us some thought and you guys may have more information to throw at us.
We will, and I've written a few questions, what I believe are your requests on this list. But if you have additional requests or something comes up over the next few days or week or two, please send me an email and we'll gladly get that information for you.
Okay.
Part of our conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, teacher substitute pool retirement incentive?
I have a talking point page for you to be able to refer to when we are looking at this. I know that Denise gave you, I believe, an updated proposal for the teacher substitute pool. The idea is we're trying to create a wealth of knowledge in our substitute pool so that when we do have teachers out of the building, we can maintain the consistency in curriculum and instruction as well as continue the culture and climate of the school. It is difficult to secure subs right now, which is a phenomenon that's happening across the state of Oregon and throughout the nation. The teacher candidate pool has decreased. People are not going into education, for whatever reason that might be. Teacher education programs are also closing. And then with, of course, the improved economy, people who had four-year degrees that were looking to supplement income and were substituting have been able to find full-time employment. So, there have been many episodes in the last, this year, up to today even, well, actually Thursday, where we've not been able to secure subs for our classrooms. And so, if you look at the, some numbers there ranging from Buchanan to Victor Point, we've had a half a day at Evergreen where they couldn't find a sub, up to a high of six in Buchanan where they were not able to find a sub for a position. We have this really fantastic system. It's an automated system called ASOP that does make sub phone calls for us. On average, it's making anywhere from thirty to 110 phone calls trying to find people to sub for us, which again, when you, I have conversations with other HR directors in the state, they have similar systems and are having similar issues. There's one agency that runs a subsystem for thirteen districts, smaller districts, accommodated Polk County, and they have not, there has not been one day where they've had full coverage with regard to substitutes. So, the idea that your three, your last, your retirement incentive expired at the end of the last school year, so this is the first year that we've had not that pool of subs that were our teachers, we're down from 152 subs to 115 this year. We had seventeen subs that were your early retirement incentives from the previous offer or pool. So, we've put together a pretty thoughtful proposal in terms of how to make sure that these people are available and actually making sure that we have the high-quality subs as often as possible. The people that know our district and know what's going on in the classrooms and the buildings, subbing for things like the teacher cadre and the professional development team, which is part of that collaboration grant. And so, it is the idea that we're creating our own network of people. The other thing we've tried to do is we put out a plea, we put it on our district webpage and also in every school's newsletter. If you have a four-year degree and you're looking for a job, please sub for us. And I've probably, you have to have a letter of support from a sponsoring district. I've probably written fifteen to twenty of those letters in the last month. But of course, TSC is twenty weeks behind. And so, you know, that's, that's not as helpful.
Is part of the program for finding subs still the same where, I know I've heard a few rumors that basically some of the retired teachers would do very specific classrooms? And since it's been automated, they're like, you know, I'm not doing it anymore because they don't have that specific call saying, hey, you know, so-and-so's class is open. Is there a way to have a balance or is that not happening?
Well, some of the teachers that, some of the retirees who chose not to be subs this year were resistant to the technology. And so, there is a way to set yourself up, like, I only want to sub for this teacher or this three teachers, and I only want to do it in this school, and don't ever call me on Fridays. There, you can set that whole profile up and it will, it will do whatever you want it to do. And so, some of our more veteran teachers were really not interested in doing that, nor were they interested registering with the WLM DSD, who's the agency that houses the system for us now.
I just heard, it's unfortunate that it's not at that personal level quite the same.
And it was even to the point where we were offering, like, come sit with me and I will help you with what that looks like. And it just, I think they were ready to move on in some senses.
It amazes me we've got 150 in the pool and still come up short.
Oh, yeah.
How many subs do we typically use on a given day?
It varies, obviously. You know, you could, on a typical day, so ASOP breaks it out by substitutes needed, absences. Absences needing a sub, absences not needing a sub. So, it ranges anywhere from maybe fifteen, fifteen subs to thirty-five, depending on a given day.
Sure.
And of course, more when we're doing the professional development activities or when we've had the Jory Ellis trainings where we have groups of teachers out for those trainings.
That's all planned.
It's, it's planned, yeah. And so, the idea of having this pool of teachers is that at the beginning of the year, we already know what these training dates are for the most part. So, each of these candidates could sit down with the building principal or the curriculum director and say, okay, we know in October, we've got these two dates. You're going to do this, you're going to do that. And so, it will be very outlined and planned for that pool of subs.
Questions for Andy? Thank you for all the information. Yeah, in my mind, this seems like a, like a good time to do this again. It's been a few years since we did this. And especially with the substitute problem, it seems like it'd be a good time to offer this to substitute.
Have you had the interest? I know that it was kind of set out there a little bit. Has there been enough interest?
Yes, yes. We, we did change one of the numbers today. Your initial proposal said up to fifteen. We moved that to seventeen today.
And budgetary-wise, it's still positive with seventeen?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, the purpose of it is, that's not the first reason why we did it, but the likelihood that we would save money is high.
Added benefit.
It always has in the past.
Yeah.
This is an action item later tonight to approve this. Any other discussion? Okay, Scott, financial report.
Great, your financial report is included in your packet. Operating statement on the front page shows that income is coming along at a positive pace and the same pace as traditional, as well as your expenditures. We're at forty-six percent of expenditures on budget. Page two, I'd like to refer you to the white sheet rather than the golden sheet. The white sheet has some updated figures and some adjustments in that budget balance column for the subject to carry over retention. So, makes kind of the principals a little happier with some better numbers in that last column. And then, and then finally, your third page is, of course, your fund balance report. So, are there any questions on the financial report?
Questions for Scott? Very much. Okay, thank you, Scott. Lisa Garrett's going to give our Scottsmills School report tonight. Thank you for coming, Lisa.
This is Mase Cox, she will put a story in my classroom. She's going to help me set out what we're going to share tonight. I need one. Okay, and then we have two tubs. Right here. There's two layers. All right. Okay. So, Mrs. Emmett had asked me to share a new program in my classroom. I wrote a grant and received it from Selco Corporation. And it was a grant for $500. Wait, it's not your turn. She's already taking over. This is my whole classroom. This has been a learning curve. We are one-to-one iPods and the humility that you learn when a six-year-old takes your iPod and then you go, Mrs. G, wait a minute. And they go like this, and then they hand it back to you. I've learned to be humble this year. But this grant specifically was for the LEGO Story Starter Program, which is a writing program that incorporates LEGOs and the iPads. And I had done LEGO We Do Program, which is sort of the beginning of programming, computer programming for LEGO creations the last couple of years. And my colleague, actually Randall Brown, before he was my colleague, said last year, have you seen this program? He goes, it'd be right up your alley. You love reading, you love language arts. And so, I've had my eye on it. And when this grant came available, I wrote it for this grant and received it. It comes in these tubs. Each one of these tubs is $174, I believe. And I managed to get five of them with the grant and some additional money from my parent club. And then I put together a separate set, sadly, from my son's collection. That's how many LEGOs he had. So, what it does is incorporate the STEM form of thinking, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. One of the things that I am finding in my classroom is that girls are not getting exposed to engineering and math and science as much as boys. So, this was huge to get them involved in the building of the LEGOs. And the boys, I'm finding, don't really care for writing. So, this kind of gets them excited as they build their story. So, what happens is you have a storyboard in front of you. Each child receives a storyboard, so I have 23 of those. And they are given a problem or a scenario, and they are asked to build their scenario. So, the scenario that they received, as you can see, had to do with. So, the scenario that they received, as you can see, had to do with trees. It was about a, a community, we said it was Scotts Mills, and there was a tree in that community that was dangerous. It was drop, it was a big tree, and it was dropping sticky leaves into the road, and the branches were dropping and hitting cars. And so, there were two points of view. One from the forester who they had hired that said, this is an unsafe tree, we need to cut it down, although it's right in the middle of town, kids play in it, it's in the park, it's a well-loved tree. And the other point of view was from the protesters who said, no, this tree is an icon in Scotts Mills, you can't cut this down. So, you ask the kids to build this scenario, and so you can see the different scenarios. I really enjoy the, the one where the protester's sitting on top of the tree. That's relaxed to me. My, my dad was a sheriff of the inquiry county during the spotted owl controversy, and that happened to him. It was actually a teacher that handcuffed himself to a tree, which he explained to that person as he was wrestling about his daughter being a teacher and how this was gonna be horrible for her, like, okay. But anyway, they all had to, as they built their story, talk. That's a big piece of it, as they're building, they have to talk. So, if you come into my classroom during that time, it's a noisy time. They're talking and they're saying, you know, well, I'm gonna be a protester, and this is why I think that you shouldn't cut down that tree. And then another person's saying, well, I'm gonna be the forester, it's just not safe. So, they're talking, talking, they're building. I learned right away to set a timer because they could build for the whole time and we'd never get to the writing. But, so we learned that after the third lesson. But, so they build. And then what they do is they take pictures of their scenario, they import it into their app, and they begin to write. And so, I'm gonna show you, is that mine, Macy, is that yours? Let me do mine first.
Do I have to shut it off?
No, you don't have to shut it off. Okay. All right, so this is mine. So, the app is called Lego Story Visualizer. And what they do is they take pictures and then they can start a new project. So, you can see, this is just mine that I played with at home. And so, they can actually put it in all kinds of different formats. They can do it just as a regular story, and they can put their text at the top of it. They can add sound words. So, if I pull up that I want to put some extra stuff in, they've got all these little things that make it sort of comic booky, but we don't have to do that. They can put in text for their characters. Once they get it in there, they can not only put what they, their story at the top or the bottom, but they can have their character saying things, they can put in backgrounds. The great thing about this too is if I didn't want to use it with Legos, they could put my picture in or their picture in or whatever we're doing, and they could build a story just with their photographs. So, Macy's gonna show you how to put the pictures in there. So, do you wanna get yours, pull yours up? Well, actually, take a picture first. So, take a picture of one of the Legos with your camera, and then take over the board and show them how to put it in. And we learned to take close-ups, we learned to take far-away. The other thing I like about this, it's more project-based and not just it's a computer game that the kids are playing, they have to actually do something with it. All right, so come back here and take over and show and tell what you do. No, I'll put the app first and you can import it in. Okay, so start a new project. Which format do you want? Just that one? Okay, so, so tell them what you're doing, just step up. Mike, just turn. Can you tell them what you're doing?
So, you click this camera thing with the person, and then you press this photo thing with the photo stuff, then you put in, go on camera over role, and you'll see it right there on the screen.
So, you pick the picture you want.
You, um, pick the picture you want and when, if you want it sideways or upside down maybe, but, and maybe you just want it perfect and right, right side up. So, then you click on the picture and you can make it how tall you want. So, you just, it's just like making cameras bigger, you just, um...
Make it bigger with your fingers?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I did that.
And show them what to do if they don't want all the extra stuff. What would you do?
If you don't want all the extra stuff, then you press the eraser and you pick what size you want over here, and then you just write, erase the stuff you don't want, and then when you press the check, it won't be there. But if you made a mistake, then you use the painting thing to get it back, get it back.
Do you wanna put the writing in?
If you wanna put the writing in, you press these speech bubbles, and you could use speech bubbles or like just writing without speech bubbles, or you could just get like a rectangle and write in that. And in order to put the background in, you, you have to take away your picture, but your picture will still be there. So, you pre, press the background, pick which one. Let's say I wanted it at the park. So, then I go to the camera and get my picture, and if I didn't want, I would put, I would go to the eraser and then I would erase the stuff so you wouldn't see the other stuff in the park.
And so, just put some writing in there, like, they went to the park or something like that, right? Write that at the top.
Okay.
One of the things I'm finding especially is the typing skills. You know, we're needing that for the S-Back, and my kids' typing skills are getting really great. And you can move it to the bottom, press the sides, and the top. The amazing thing for me is to see it go from the noise of we're building, we're talking, we're getting this all out, and then I say, okay, the timer's up, it's time to take pictures, and the room goes silent. And for forty-five minutes, which is unheard of with six- and seven-year-olds, they are taking their pictures and they're putting things in and they're thinking about, okay, where do I want that text, and does that make sense? And I think the program comes with a curriculum, they give you some different scenarios. The very first one I was impressed with because it was about mood, and you don't often ask first graders to think about the mood of a story. We had a spinner which we built, and they would spin and whatever emotion they got, that's how they had to, they had to show that in their story. So, there was happiness, sadness, being angry, and I think excited or surprised. And so, that was huge for them to think, oh, I don't think about the mood of my character. It's, it's just been a really great program. I've been really impressed with it and the kids really like it. We currently only do it once a, a week in our classroom, but I could see if we, we only have iPods in writing once a day because I share during that hour with our next door, my next-door neighbor, and so I'd beg to get them back for that hour. But I could see if we had them full-time, being able to use this all the time. The kids, I, and they're just, they're drawn with it and their writing. When I say it's writing, they're like, yes, you know? So, anyways, I just thought it was a great thing to share.
That is really neat.
Yeah, thank you.
Macy, awesome job.
You're a great presenter.
Any questions for Lisa, real quick?
Wonderful.
Thank you, Lisa.
I can get these back without breaking them in my car.
Good job, Macy.
Okay, so everybody should have a, a blue sheet, that's what's happening at Butrick and then the white, long one we'll get to in just a minute or two over district attendance. So, just a few quick facts up on top, three hundred and twenty-four kids, et cetera, down from a high of three-thirty this year, so kind of fluctuated a little bit as we tend to do. I actually wanted to start about partway down the academic programs and just mention, just kind of looking at our Math Lab numbers, which we've had now for a couple of years at the end of the day, but then started looking at how many kids beyond Math Lab are in some kind of a targeted or even a general study setting at the end of the day in our middle school. And forty-nine kids, six through eight, out of a hundred and five. So, almost half of our kids receiving some kind of an intervention at the end of the day, which is important, especially as we're preparing for Oaks in Science and Social Studies and S-Back right after that, coming soon after spring break. Our PTT Parent Teacher Team, speaking of iPads, recently partnered with the district and the per-student amount that, that you guys approved to purchase thirty iPads for student use in K-4. It was pretty much a down-the-middle split. So, very generous of our PTT. Last year, they spent over twelve thousand dollars on those convertible tablets for the middle school. Technology continues to be a goal of theirs to, to make sure we're, we're getting up there with the, the number of student devices. We've got a long ways to go before we get to where we want to be, but we're, we're making progress. AKA Science, there was such a big sign-up for that in the fall term. We only had one class, so we had to have some kids on a waiting list, and so we expanded to two teachers for this winter term and shot up to twenty-four kids. So, we have two classes of AKA, After-School Science, Hands-On Science for Kids in Grade K through three. Cindy McKinney and Terry Woodall teach that, and so they'll teach a spring session as well. There's three sessions per year. Russian class after school and during elective time for the older kids has forty-one kids, which is as high as it's ever been. And they had a great Russian dinner back in January, made over five thousand dollars, served about three hundred meals, give or take, and put lots of volunteer hours into that, so it was a fun time as usual. And then we hope to have our summer experience. Again, we're looking ahead to summer, our title funds, and maybe some other funding sources. So, hopefully, we can have our three-week summer school again in August. Like all of our schools in the district, we're doing more this year than we've ever done before to try to get our attendance rates up. Weekly contests, monthly contests. In April, we do our, our class average for the, the Magic Show by Dan the Magic Man, who's graciously come each year to provide a magic show, a great magic show for the classroom with the highest percentage. And it's, it continues to be a bit of a struggle though. So, this would be a good time to look at our white spreadsheet here. Mine's all written all over the place here on it, but we did print it off in color so you can see. Sandy Sprower sends this to me each month shortly after the end of, of the month. The black numbers are the current year, monthly attendance rates per school, and then the red are the same month from last year. So, you can really easily compare. And I was kind of drilling it down a little bit this afternoon to see if, if in any of our schools has it been a, you know, all, all of them increased each month. And there's not a single school that attendance went up each month from the previous year, from the same month of the previous year. So, but congratulations to Central Howell, Evergreen, and Scotts Mills because they lead the league with five out of the six months of school we've had so far, they have increased their attendance. And those, that's the tops. One school had increased one month out of the six, my own school had only increased two months out of the six. So, some work to be done. And then you can see also the totals of the, the cumulative totals. On the far-right side, we have five schools that are above that ninety-five percent rate. I know we like to see ninety-five percent for all, each student is the goal, but it's, it's kind of neat to at least look at that number for the rate for the school. And the two months that, that had the, showed the greatest increase across the district, September, with ten out of our thirteen schools went up from the previous September, and the month of December, also with ten out of the thirteen schools, increasing in the month of December. So, some interesting attendance numbers, but an uphill battle as we, but we're, we're working hard at it. I know every single school is, is do, are doing some similar things, some different things to try to increase the student attendance. But this will come out every month. I can have Andy forward it around to you guys if you don't look at me. This is my last presentation for the year, but thanks to Sandy for putting all this together each month and, and sending it to me.
Can you fix, say some things that maybe have worked and things that haven't worked?
So, for us, nothing seems to have worked. So, I mean, honestly, it, we're, we've increased in two months out of the six at Butrick. That's probably a little harsh to say nothing seems to have worked because there are some things that get kids excited about coming. We had a weekly contest last week, and kids, second graders, we, we overheard them telling each other, you, you can't miss school tomorrow, you know, you've gotta be here so our class will win. The incentives are good, you know, we'd love to have them come just because they should be in school, not for the incentive. And then also last week, found out we have a family in Disneyland for a week, for the, you know, two weeks before spring vacation. That's frustrating. So, tho, those are some of the things we, we face. So, individual incentives, class incentives by the week, by the month, plus messages, constant messages in our newsletter, weekly newsletter to families, stressing the importance, contacting families whose kids are, you know, don't have the best attendance or what they should have. And some of those things are working slowly, but it's, it's been tough.
Many times, it's gonna be simply be a family decision, so the more you educate the family, the better. And at the same time, we don't want kids showing up when they're sick too, and I've heard a little bit of that happening and...
Yeah, and I suppose that could happen. You know, you can have a little bit of that, that's a fine... That's a fine line, Wally. I mean, you know, when a kid wakes up, you know, a little scratch in the throat, a little headache or whatever, I want them to push through. You know, just like our adults in our building. You know, you, home if you're sick, and, you know, you go to work. If you maybe don't feel the best, you still go to work, push through. So, we have a lot of work to do to get the message across. I might have shared with you guys the great story out of the fall, and one of the, one of the few. We had one of our Russian families called the school. It was a Russian holiday. Let us know that the kids would be home that day. It was a major holiday. But also that they were, they had rescheduled their doctor and dentist appointments to that day on their holiday. So, they wouldn't have to miss other days of school to do it. That's a success story, right there. And that was one of the coolest attendance stories I've got from the school year so far. We appreciate that. So, that was big. Some other highlights down the bottom so far. The auction back in February seventeenth, Annual Butrick Auction, raised over seventeen thousand dollars, which is by about four thousand dollars a record out there. Usually, tops out around thirteen thousand or so. So, they just knocked it out of the park. It was tremendous. Our robotics team, the top team, the VEX, the VEX IQ, or the younger kids, VEX, or the older middle school kids, the kids that made it to Nationals last year, they made it to Nationals again, which they'll go in April. And then this last weekend at their state tournament, they qualified for the World Championships as well. So, not sure that they'll go to the Worlds, although the Worlds is in Anaheim, of all places.
Oh, man.
I mean, honestly, I was kind of hoping for Paris or something like that or London, but Anaheim. But anyhow, not sure if we'll make both those trips. But a great accomplishment. Those kids are listed down below in bold along with our Battle of the Books teams that are competing last weekend and this coming weekend. So, lots of terrific things happening in Butrick.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
All right, thanks.
Any board reports tonight? Correspondence, a couple emails recently.
Well, we did, like, we did get that letter from Taylor Metal Products. And my understanding is we did get bids from multiple companies that did meet the spec requirements for the roofs.
That's correct. That company did not meet the spec requirements and.
And others did.
That's correct. For the roofing projects, which you'll be receiving next month because we're working on those now. So, no contract has been signed, no agreement has been made.
Okay, let me clarify. A second audience of visitors. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, a couple action items tonight. First one, consideration of teacher substitute pool retirement incentive. Is there a motion?
So, moved?
It's moved in seconded. All in favor of approving the teacher substitute pool retirement incentive? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. And our section, second action item, approve PMG Incorporated Eagle Creek in the amount of seventy-seven, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as contractor for abatement of hazardous materials of former agricultural industrial arts building on the Slater Street campus. Is there a motion?
Moved for approval?
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break and move into executive session under ORS 192660 to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection.